All right, hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks to all of you for joining us for our briefing meeting. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on our agenda for the briefing meeting? Or any other items that folks would like to add to the agenda? All right, great, then we'll follow this agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the evening meeting? Great, okay. The first item under staff updates is the classification schedule changes.
While we're waiting for the presentation to come up, I'm not sure if you all have met Leslie Sobel. Leslie is our Comp and Benefits Manager, and she has done the majority of this amazing work. I just want to recognize Leslie and thank her for the hard work she's done.
I think I've met all of you. Nice to see you.
All right, so this is my annual presentation for the fiscal '24 Comp and Class Plan Updates. So just a quick overview of the changes. So there's been a lot of review, corrections, and updates to our pay plan over this past 12 months. A new series, two new series of classifications are coming in this year. The first one is the Assistant Director I, Assistant Director II, and the second is part of the internship, apprenticeship, and fellowship program that we're in the process of building out. The other that you'll see is the, excuse me, is that we're trying to mirror titles to go into industry standards, so that way when we do our next market review, we can really look at apples and apples. For example, the, in the past, we had Library I, Librarian II, Librarian III, and the Librarian II were branch managers. Not everybody had Librarian II's, and so what we're trying to do is make things a little bit equal across the board to make our next market review a little bit more seamless. Now, all the changes I'm about to talk about in the upcoming slide is in your, I guess, budget manual budget folder, so. The next, I'm not going to go through all the titles, I'm happy to, but as we're adding additional titles, we have 36 new additional titles coming in this year. We are deleting five, and for the Division Manager III, that one, that position is actually going into our Assistant Director. So we're in the process of looking at what titles did not get used and then repurposing them if we can. Changes, these are all the changes that are coming in for changing titles. You'll see on the left is what the current title is and then what the change is going to be. Two pages full. You're going to see on the changes continued, we have Buncombe County Sheriff's Office that actually has the BCSO in the front. The reason for it is the sheriff has a span of control over his positions, so we wanted to make sure that, one, for reporting purposes, we'd be able to quickly report based on those positions. They're all in the same grade, so they'll be treated similarly to every other position, but when we do market or we do equity, he has the ability to assign different wages than we do, and so we want to make sure that we're able to report based on equity for our compensation plan. Quick, I know you guys have a long night, so I tried to do it real quick for you. How about questions? Do you have any questions for us?
I guess, thanks for the update. Just, other than sort of changing the terminology to sort of, you know, update them, I mean, does this have any other kind of practical implications? Is it just sort of changing the title? I mean, that just, I guess, what does it mean?
So, a couple things. With the appeals that came through, we did update positions based on the approval of the appeals that are in there. Titles, for the most part, is really what the changes are with the positions. Leslie, is there anything else I'm guessing on that?
No, it's just like what she said, it's mainly to be able to match other counties and to make them more industry standard, for the most part.
Right, in terms of county government peer standards, yeah. Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions?
I don't think so.
I think if you time.
Thank you for the updates, appreciate it.
As we are transitioning to the next item, the classification plan is something that you adopt every year, so we can only use the titles that you adopt. So that's why we have to come and get it updated every year.
I'm here today to provide some updates for the General Services Fleet Building. Before I get into it, on March 30th, it went out to bid. Bids were due back May 9th. We didn't have enough bidders to open on May 9th, so we extended it, per general statute, to the 17th. We had three bidders, Hickory Construction being the lowest bidder. Before we get into the numbers, we'll talk about a little bit of the amenities of the building, as well as the recommended alternates. We'll start in the lower right-hand corner. Alternate four is trailer and equipment storage shelter. This covers 5,200 square feet, and it would allow shelter for our large equipment items like tobaccos, the mowers and trailers, tractors, things of that nature. Moving clockwise, you'll see that we have dual EV chargers located on opposing ends of the building. This will help accommodate our increasing electric vehicle fleet. Our building envelope has been designed to the International Green Constructions Code. This exceeds the requirements of the North Carolina Energy Code to allow us to get a more efficient building. We've also used some of the canopies to help shade the southwest glazing to provide more efficient cooling. Moving on to alternate three is our whole building generator. It would allow 48-hour continuous runtime, full load. Being on a retired landfill, we do have to have the gas mitigation system, consist of a vapor barrier and gas detections, and it will be installed as well. And then alternate one, requested during the life cycle cost analysis, is our rooftop solar panel system. This is 220 kilowatt DC, would be our second-largest county-owned system, only behind that one that's going on HHS parking deck. Moving to the interior, you'll see several high-efficiency HVAC equipment with electric-resistant heat in lieu of natural gas. They're scattered throughout the exterior perimeter. Our interior corridors, the doors have glass in them to share the daylight into the interior of the space. We have multiple collaboration areas. We have three high-volume low-speed fans in the garage for cooling. We're standardizing work benches and toolboxes, and we have the newer mobile lifts. They'll accommodate all of our ambulances, our new EMS command centers. They'll pick up anything from a Toyota Corolla to a city bus. That's, they're battery-operated, charge at night, very capable equipment. The final alternate that we show here is a mezzanine storage of 3,000 square feet on the left side of the high bay area. This would normally be wasted space, and by adding the mezzanine, it gives us 3,000 square foot of storage. When we were talking with the metal building fabricator, we looked at lowering the ceiling to try to reduce costs, but it actually didn't reduce costs at all. It made some transitions more complicated in the roofline, and so we carried the high ceiling for the full length of the building. Our remaining CIP budget is $7,748,907. It originated in June 2021. Our base bid plus all the alternates is $9,453,000, which leaves us a deficiency of $1,704,93. It's a 21.99% increase since June of 2021. Our base bid was $8,054,000. Alternate one was $487,000. It's a solar panel installation, and that was requested during the life cycle cost analysis. Alternate two is $239,000, and that's the mezzanine storage system. Alternate three is the whole building generator at $503,000. And alternate four is $170,000 for the trailer storage shelter. And we can, if you guys want, I can continue through my presentation and come back, and we can go through the alternates individually if you'd like. Some of the reasons for the escalation, the CBRE Construction Cost Index shows over those two years a 26% increase due to escalation, and we're actually below that. We're at 21.99%. Full electrification of the building, it was requested during the life cycle cost presentation in lieu of natural gas. This has a higher initial cost but meets the goals of our 2025 Strategic Plan, promoting environmental and energy stewardship by reducing our carbon footprint. And then also installation of the solar panels, which was requested during the life cycle cost presentation. This has a higher cost over being solar-ready, but does have a payback over the life cycle from 11 to 14 years. Building the new Fleet Services Building activates several key components of the facilities plan. It vacates 40 McCormick, which is our current maintenance facility, and allows the building to be renovated into a regional EMS base. It vacates 194 Hominy Creek Road, which is our current fleet facility, and allows for the transfer station to have additional space to address safety and wait times. And it vacates 52 APEC Drive, which is currently our grounds facility, and will allow for the, a future parks and rec building. Our requests, we're requesting to increase the CIP budget by $1,704,93 to construct the General Services Fleet Facility with all the alternates. The project will be debt-financed and does not require additional pay-go funding. And our next steps would be BOC meeting next, on the 20th, and request approval. We have to have our contract complete within 60 days of the bid, and, which would be the 17th of July. We would order long-lead items in August of this year and start construction early And we can go back and discuss the alternates if you guys have any questions.
I have just, maybe one question. The, and these are, these are based on just cost estimates, but there's no, like, hard bid that's been submitted to this. It hasn't been bid out yet, right? So it's just sort of...
No, this is our bid.
This is the bid? Okay, this is, okay, I'm sorry, thanks for clarifying that. And the, on the, my only question on the, maybe, my only question on the solar installation, which of course I'm real supportive of having solar installation, so Duke will limit the maximum size of that project to, like, the capacity of the, or the peak demand in the building, right? So have we done a forecast on that? Do we know that we can actually install a system of this size based on the anticipated electrical use in the building?
If I'm not mistaken, I think we went to 80% of the building. Jeremiah, is that, was that correct? 90%.
Okay, so we're pretty confident it can accommodate a system of this size. Duke will allow that to be a net metered system there. Okay, great.
That estimate involving the solar include 30% investment tax credit?
That I'm not sure of.
This just reflects the cost to build it. It isn't, like, we could qualify for some rebates and things like that. There's a lot of great new national rebates that we might qualify for, so it doesn't factor in some of those things that might come back to the county, it's just the cost to build it, so. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Here, I see Jeremiah nodding, is that, yes, great.
It's like a light show.
And there's no, there's no battery storage contemplated currently in the project, right? Or Jeremiah, do you want to comment on that? The, part of the reason I'm asking about that is we just, at the Energy and Environment Committee, we just had some great analysis done by the staff around retrofitting existing county buildings where we've done solar installations over the last couple of years with battery storage, and I think that'll actually be coming forward for the commission to look at in the near future, because we were really pleasantly surprised at what a financially attractive proposition that is. So have we done that kind of analysis here? Because if it's attractive for the retrofits, would it not be attractive potentially for this installation, or for this new facility too?
Yeah, it's a great question, and there's, there's really two answers. Number one, we, we were asked initially about what would a battery look, look like as a, as a full backup system, right, for the facility? And as a, as a backup system, the size battery, the costs really outweigh the benefits. That said, as we talked about in, in that environmental subcommittee meeting, if we were to look at adding battery storage for this facility as, as simply demand offset and energy arbitrage, sort of peak shifting, it could actually be much more attractive. And so we have added this project to that overall analysis. I don't have the numbers today, but we have added it to that analysis that we're doing for battery storage projects, and once we get those numbers back, I'm sure that it's very possible that it will be a pretty, pretty attractive project, but I don't have those numbers for you today.
Okay, so it's being looked at, it's not in the current cost estimate, but if it comes back and it's attractive, then it could be added on as a kind of standalone, makes sense in its own right, so.
Absolutely, as well as several of the other projects, we'll potentially bring those, sort of as a package deal, probably.
Great. The, I think the question I have, I think we, I think I asked this question before, I'm just going to ask it again though. So, so this, the, the alternates do have this full, like, basically, aside from whether there's ever any battery systems to go along with the PV system, there's a backup generator system for this building, right? Are there backup generator systems for the existing facilities that this one is replacing?
That's correct. We have one on the maintenance facility that's a whole building generator. We have one at Fleet that will power parts like a lift and an air compressor, but it doesn't do the whole building, and we have the capability to connect a mobile generator at our grounds facility.
Yeah. So, but this would be much more robust, right? Like, whole building, and I guess that's my question. I mean, some buildings are so essential, you know, you think about your 911 center, you think about, you know, your hospital, things like that, of course, where, like, you can never be offline, right? It must be for safety, public health and safety reasons, it's got to be operational all the time. So a lot of redundancy is worth investing in, and I guess I just kind of, thinking about this facility, you know, when we have a, you know, pretty reliable electrical grid, I mean, everybody's power flickers every now and then, but, you know, but if it did go off for, you know, a half a day or a day or something, if there's a big storm and a tree goes across the line somewhere up there, it doesn't strike me as like, that's the, it'd be an inconvenience, but I guess that, I guess that's the, that would be the piece of it I would have the most question about. Is it really worth spending that much more money for such a kind of a robust, like, backup system for a facility of this nature? Or something maybe more, where you'd have some, but maybe, I don't know, maybe a little bit less expensive would be the right fit?
And it does, that is where we house our EMS vehicles, our ambulances, and those require to be plugged in all the time. If they, you know, discharge, it can cause damage to the vehicles, so those are, all of our EMS and our sheriff patrol cars are also serviced there.
They're serviced there. They're not parked there, like, on a regular, but just when they're being worked on, they're...
That's correct. Our, our backup ambulances are parked there. I think there's five there currently, at our current Fleet Facility.
Yeah, but this, but this generator system isn't just designed to do that, it's designed to run this entire building for a long time, right? Which is a very different level of, like, capacity needed than keeping a few vehicles charged, right?
And it would have the capability of supporting many other functions. If, if folks needed a place to come, we've got large meeting areas, you know, in, in event of any kind of a natural disaster. If the grid were to go down like it did with the transformer down east where it was out for several weeks from where someone damaged the transformer, so it does provide some resiliency for the county as well with other departments.
Commissioner, this is our operations center, when it not emergency operations, but all of our fleet. Should we have a hurricane or even a winter storm, which is more typical for us, this is the group that has to come and get our roads cleared and our sidewalks and our parking lots cleared out before staff can come to work or before anyone can access our buildings. So this is truly our operations center, almost that you would think for a city public works. This is that crew that does that. So they're here, well, before we open business in the mornings, should anything happen.
All right, those are my questions. Other, any other questions?
No questions, but I do support the alternates that they have listed here.
All right, any other, if there's any other questions, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, great, thanks for the updates. All right, up next is the composting drop-off sites, interlocal agreement with the City of Asheville.
There it is. I'm here today to discuss next steps for our food scraps drop-off program. So just to center the discussion and kind of remind you all about the work that we've done so far and the data that we've collected leading up to this point and influencing these next steps. So we found that 35.2% of county residential landfill materials are in fact compostable, and that was found in our 2022 waste characterization study that we contracted with SCS to perform. Number two, 48,200 tons of county residential compostables per year are landfilled, and that was found as part of the 2022 Waste Diversion Study, also performed by SCS. And so across sectors, about 33,000 tons of food waste are generated per year, and that was, the NRDC estimated that figure in 2021 as part of a city-county-wide study. And so all in all, diverting organics away from the landfill is going to contribute to our waste reduction goals, and it also reduces greenhouse gas emissions, emissions as called for in the strategic plan. So just a brief update about our drop-off program. It officially opened to the public in October 2021 with one site. Now we have expanded to eight current sites, five of which are at libraries. We have an amazing partnership with the libraries, and it's just worked, it's just been so successful, and we are so thankful for their support and partnership. It's just been such a fun experience, so shout out to the libraries. And also, two drop-off sites are located at our solid waste facilities as well. So numbers-wise, approximately 2,300 households are registered for the program, which equates to about 4,000 individuals. We also collect, in addition to households, we ask number of people within the household because that gives us a more accurate picture of how many people are actually using these sites. And we also learned that approximately 65% were not actively composting prior to program participation, which I think is a really positive statistic in showing community engagement for this program, and that's just really awesome, a result of our program. So far, there have been 160 tons diverted to date, which is a very significant amount, and it's projected to be 225-plus tons for the year, and that is equivalent to 756 tons of carbon dioxide or 164 vehicles driven for one year. So this interlocal agreement outlines roles and responsibilities for both the city and the county. On the county end, we will oversee facility management and maintenance needs for any sites on county property. We will also be in, we will also manage the hauler communications and logistics for all sites. We will work with the hauler to establish and maintain weight data recording, reporting, and management, and we will also manage contract administration and invoice payment to ensure contract compliance and ongoing quality of service for all deliverables. On the city side, they will oversee facility management and maintenance needs for any sites on city property. They will also provide customer service support, such as ongoing registration and communication with registered users, including confirmation emails, daily and/or weekly responses to inquiries, program updates, and user data management for all sites. And they will also provide funds to the county to pay for 50% of the hauling contract to sites located within city limits. So in terms of next steps, this will be on the consent agenda in the next Board of Commissioners meeting on June 20th for a request for approval. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for the update, sounds very positive.
Thank you.
I will add one thing here, I was just thinking about, we've been hearing about bear issues, and I do think about with the composting, if people, more people will up for this program rather than putting it in their trash, that could help, and so people can go, it's bearwise, I think, bearwise.com or bearwise.org, and start educating themselves around some of the issues that we're having with bears. So I just really appreciate what you all are doing with this program, and, and I hear from the folks at the libraries, and they love it.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, next update is update on solar project installations, and Jeremiah LaRoy will help us out with this.
Hello again. Hey, end of the awkward silence, okay. So, we understood that there were a handful of questions in some recent meetings about the status of the solar projects that you all approved, and so I wanted to give you a quick update. So, as you remember, we did a pretty robust group of solar projects, more than any other local government in North Carolina by far, and the Phase One projects are really underway, many of them are complete, so I wanted to give you kind of this brief update here. All the ones in green that you see are, are complete or substantially complete. The ones on my right there that are in yellow are the ones that are still ongoing. I'm going to give you a little bit more of an update on the ongoing ones, still here in just a second. Just as a quick reminder, original project cost was about 10.2 million dollars. We did have a budget amendment several months ago for 600,000 to cover some increased costs of solar panels. The good news there is that we have received over a million dollars in solar rebates, and so that 600,000 dollars has been at least offset with, with some rebates obviously still left over. So, and, just as a quick reminder, total estimated lifetime savings of these projects is estimated to be a little over 15 million dollars. is estimated to be a little over 15 million dollars. The ongoing projects, as you saw, the ones at the county schools are exclusively the ground mounted sites. There was a much more extended review process for those. So in addition to the various delays that COVID caused through this entire project, there was some extended delays based on review processes. Those are now complete. All of those projects are now underway as we speak. The two parking deck canopies on both of our parking decks here in downtown have always been intended to be the very last projects done. They are very complex and the contractor wants to focus on them exclusively. Though that said, if you had a chance to go into the parking deck in the last couple of days, they are actually wiring it as we speak. So they are running a ridiculous amount of conduit over there yesterday and today. Lucy Herring, a Nashville city school is, has, has recently been approved for some pretty major renovations. So in addition to a bunch of new HVAC equipment, et cetera, it's also getting a new roof. So we're waiting. So simple answer there is we're going to wait until that roof is replaced and then we're going to perform the project at that time. So because many of these projects have not been complete for a really long period of time, we don't have a ton of robust data to give you on them. However, I didn't want to leave here without showing you that they are making a difference. So we do have about 10 facilities, 10 county facilities where we've installed solar to date. And we've got some pretty decent data on the savings that we've seen from those 10 facilities. So in FY22, you're looking at about 147,000 dollars that we spent on our electric bill for those facilities. Year to date and during the 10 months that we've done so far, that's 67,000 dollars. So it's again, not a full year, but it's showing that there's a real difference. And just to give you some more context there, the average monthly bill for those 10 facilities was a little over 10,000 dollars and now it's just a little over six. So we're seeing real savings and that's with some of these not being online for the entire FY23 and with having an 8% utility rate increase during that same time period. So we're seeing real savings from these, from these installations. Additional future projects, we had some in FY22 that were funded. East Asheville Library, the firing range, as well as a couple of community partners that we didn't fund, but we sort of helped facilitate those processes. Those projects are now complete. We've got four additional county schools as well as a judicial complex that are FY23 projects. They are under contract and currently underway. They're just in the very early stages of development, however. And we do plan on a couple of more for FY24. Hall Fletcher and Claxton Elementary both needed new roofs at the time that we did the original assessment. They now have new roofs and so they're on the list for the next go around. And the same can be said for the Inca AB Tech campus building. That is a very quick update, but I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns anyone has.
Jeremiah, are there any updates on the ARPA funds that we allocated for solar?
Yeah, so those were for fire departments, absolutely. So the short version is we have reached out to all the fire departments. We had initial meetings with all the fire departments. We've done site assessments for all the fire departments and we're currently doing the design, the initial design work for the fire departments. And it's looking like probably early summer that we'll have most of that design work complete. And then probably within a few weeks of that, we'll be able to put a bid together, right? And put an RFP out. And then it's just a matter of, you know, getting bids, going through that process. So optimistically, which I like to be optimistic, you know, end of the summer, we'd like to see something out and get some bids back, hopefully end of the summer, early fall at the absolute latest.
And how many do you anticipate will?
We've had a dozen right now. We've had about a dozen.
A half dozen or eight dozen?
Even, yeah, even 12 actually right now. Now, I will say that during the assessment process, it's possible that one or two may be taken off the list because the viability of that site is, is not great, right? Whether structural reasons or some French broad, for example, is looking at potentially doing some pretty major renovations if they get the funding to do it. So we would put a hold on that, but about a dozen altogether right now.
And do you, understanding you haven't done budget, do you anticipate that the ARPA funds that were allocated will be sufficient to likely accomplish the project, assuming they want to, you know, install the size systems that would make sense for those buildings?
I believe so. Just again, pretty high level estimates at this point, but you never know what anything costs until you get a bid back. But our initial cost estimates, yes, I believe that the money that's been allocated should cover that cost.
All right, thank you for the update, Jeremiah. Are there any other questions?
I guess a common or question. I couldn't help but notice you mentioned in the beginning about how, you know, our county is ahead of others in the state. And I'm sure that's going to be true once you're done with processing your, your storage research, assuming we deploy some of that.
Sure.
The economics look amazing. I guess I, I would ask the question like, how can we get you on the road and help educate other counties about just the, I don't know, the savings?
This is a terrific question and I would actually answer that with, we already have. And in fact, I've had many of my colleagues across the state say that Buncon County has been an inspiration for their jurisdictions to take on a lot of these projects themselves. Charlotte is slowly catching up with us, but I'm not going to let them. And they have a lot more buildings than we do, so there's only so much we can do. But I, I think we're starting to see pretty widespread adoption of these types of initiatives across the state. We're thankful, thankfully, we have a pretty robust sort of network of sustainability directors across the southeast. And so we talk to each other a lot and I brag a lot because I can, because we are ahead of the game. But I, in fact, I, I met with them just recently to start to share the results of that storage study for that very reason, to show them that, you know, once you've installed these PV systems, you're, you're going to be silly not to install storage in addition to, because the, the financials of it are just terrific.
That's great to hear and let us know how we might be able to help with that sort of.
Absolutely.
Writing the word, because it can be, can come across differently if we, if we try.
Absolutely.
For better or worse.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Jeremiah, appreciate the great update. Okay, the last item on the staff updates is the reallocation of FY23 budget items. And Robert Brown is here to help us out with this. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, thank you. I'm here to discuss the reallocation of fiscal year 23 budget, a 23 budget item. That's what this request is for. The, the budget item is the EMS services base construction at 7,250,000 dollars. That has previously been approved to be debt financed. The reallocation is intended to be two parts. The first part is to amend the budget for 500,000 dollars for a temporary West Asheville EMS base to be located at the Asheville primary school site and 150,000 dollars for the feasibility study that we previously discussed for the Asheville primary school site. Of course, the feasibility study determines where the temporary or temporary and mobile EMS site will be on Asheville primary. And then the second part is to create a new budget of 6,600,000 dollars out of the total for a permanent EMS base in the eastern part of Buncon County. And that'll be located contiguous to the Owen Pool. Show you sort of an image of, of what we're talking about on the Asheville primary school site. That's just a placeholder location. Of course, the feasibility study would determine its reality and, and what place on the site it would be. At Owen Pool, it is the US 70, old US 70 highway, right off of that, in the front parking lot area of the pool. It's in Swananoa. That area will house the building, the drives, parking and a generator. And it's planned to be, to meet the, the full LEED adopted resolution. Next steps, which I think would be for our next meeting, create a new budget for the eastern base and amend the budget for the West Asheville base. Welcome to entertain questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When I look at for a temporary location at the Asheville primary school, 500,000 dollars, what do we get for that?
You get an EMS expedited that serves the western part.
No, no, I mean, are we getting a facility or what?
Okay, so you're getting a mobile office and, and bedroom facility.
Okay.
That, that can move on. You're getting a temporary storage building that also will house the ambulances. Those, those facilities can later be relocated to another site. They can stay there just as long as it takes to determine where the west station should be, whether it's on the, the primary school site that, through the feasibility study, or if it's not and it's another site, you'll still have service and it can stay there until that time.
Good answer to my question, good.
Yes, sir.
And so based on the EMS study that we had, so this eastern base, that location fits in really well with what we learned from that study?
Yes, ma'am. And what, what this does is it allows you to actually hit both of the target areas. It allows you to almost immediately hit the west, which was the primary, what the primary funding was for. The problem is, is actually having a site. The second in line is the east, which we have a site, which is owned by us. So this breakup allows us to actually start the service in the west sooner and allows us to build and, and have this next in line in the east sooner because we go ahead and begin the design work.
Any, any questions for now? All right, this will be on our agenda for the next meeting. Okay, great, thank you so much for.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, those are all the items we had on our agenda. So we will adjourn and reconvene at five o'clock for the regular meeting.